No operating costs can be funded through impact fees. Um, when we are evaluating impact fees, we are really looking at different growth projections utilizing a level of standard methodology. Which means we're trying to determine what the infrastructure needs are to maintain San Mateo's existing level of standard and service for its key service areas. When we looked at city growth, our consultants utilize regional growth projections from the Association of Bay Area Governments or A BAG. As well as the city's own master plans or capital project plans. And then we also looked at the type of development for residential projects, uh, which we'll be discussing tonight. We use dwelling units to determine future impacts to the city. Um, whereas non-residential projects impacts are based on square footage. Uh, so that's an important component of ensuring that the nexus is relatable and proportionate to the type of development. And then finally, impact fees are governed by AB sixteen hundred and the mitigation fee act, which requires they meet five, uh, requirements noted on this slide. First, there needs to be a clear purpose, so the city can explain why the fee is being collected. Uh, second, the city needs to define how revenue from the fee will be used. Third, there needs to be a clear benefit relationship between the fee and the type of developments. Fourth, there needs to be a clear need for the impact fee and a relationship between the type of development and the fee that it is charged. And then lastly, and one point that we will discuss, uh, frequently in tonight's presentation, the fee must be based upon the share of the new development's impact on the city's infrastructure needs. Uh, so again, that idea of proportionality and fair share is something we will return to throughout tonight's presentation. So following the June seventh city council meeting, staff and consultants reviewed some of the existing policies other jurisdictions utilized to incentivize certain types of development. Uh, and in doing so, we found that they generally fall into one of two categories. The first is a fee deferral. Uh, in most cases, fees are collected when a city issues a building permit. However, in an effort to offer some additional flexibility to developers, some jurisdictions allow applicants to pay later in the development process, often when the certificate of occupancy is issued. Um, this gives applicants more time to secure the funding they need to pay the fees. And if the fees are paid with a construction loan, for example, it saves them any interest payments they might have been making in the time between the building permit issuance and when the city decides that these should be collected. And then depending on the size of the project, uh, that span between when the building permits are issued and the certificate of occupancy can be anywhere from several months to a few years. And then the second main policy option, um, that other jurisdictions in California are utilizing is a fee waiver or reduction. So some jurisdictions have opted to set fees at lower rates for certain land uses or construction that occurs in certain areas of the jurisdiction. And this generally provides a larger financial benefit to the developer than a deferral would, for example. But cities that use this policy option then need to find other ways to make up for the lost revenue, which they cannot make up for by charging higher rates on other types of development. Um, and so we'll go into each of these in a bit more detail and also look at some specific policy examples from across California on the next few slides. So first, we will look at the fee deferral. As I mentioned, in this situation, a city allows a developer to pay fees at a later date than they otherwise might have. The developer pays the rates that were in effect when the building permits were issued, uh, but doesn't actually make the payment until later in the process. And so the primary development or the primary benefit with a fee deferral is the financial flexibility that it gives a developer. They have more time to secure the, the funding or financing. They save on interest payments in the intervening period, and they don't need to worry about fees going up once their building permits are issued. Uh, from the city's perspective, it's important to note that the city still recoups the full impact fees for the development. But it does introduce, um, some uncertainty in the payment timeline, uh, because it depends on the progress being made on the project in terms of how much time passes between the issuance of the building permit and the certificate of occupancy, for example. Um, in addition, there's a fairly significant administrative cost associated with creating and managing deferral agreements with developers. And then lastly, I just want to point out, existing state law generally provides for the deferral of impact fees to final inspection or certificate of occupancy for certain housing developments with at least forty nine percent affordable units. Uh, so those projects that have at least fifty percent or forty nine and higher, uh, affordable and are multifamily residential. But some jurisdictions have made deferral a more broadly available option, and that's what we're going to be looking at on the next slide. So this slide highlights some examples of fee deferral programs in jurisdictions across the state. As you can see, jurisdictions set their own eligibility requirements. So in this case, Sacramento and Woodland offer deferrals to multifamily residential and commercial. While Roseville's program is focused on single family and commercial. Um, one of the things I mentioned on the previous slide is that the deferral of fees can introduce some uncertainty into the collection of revenue. And one way that Sacramento and Woodland have chosen to mitigate that is by putting a time cap on the term of the deferral. In the event that the project, for example, is delayed or drags on longer than anticipated. So you can see Sacramento offers a maximum of thirty six months for final inspection, and then Woodland offers a maximum of twenty four months. And then lastly, there are different approval mechanisms for the deferrals. So most jurisdictions require developers to submit a formal application, and then the approval process often differs based on the total dollar value of the fees that are being deferred. So similar to how many cities have different signature thresholds, for example, for contracts based on the size of the contract. Um, larger deferrals will often require city council approval, whereas the city manager or community development director might be able to approve deferrals for smaller projects. So the second set of policy options, uh, we're going to look at are fee waivers or reductions. And so as I noted earlier, a jurisdiction can set impact fees at a level up to the full calculated impact indicated in a Nexus study. However, a city council or other decision-making body can choose to set fees at a lower level to incentivize certain types of development. Um, from a developer perspective, this reduces the cost of construction in some cases considerably, and we'll look at one prototype in particular in a few slides. It also provides greater financial certainty to developers and their financial backers at the outset of the project. And then from the city's perspective, any revenue that's lost through the use of waivers would need to be made up or from other sources. And it cannot come from charging other developments more than their fair share as calculated in the Nexus study. Um, some cities have capped the number of units or projects eligible for a waiver, uh, to provide some financial certainty from one year to the next. And then, uh, cities also have the option of deciding which of their fees are waived, if any, so it doesn't need to be all impact fees. It could be, uh, sort of a mixture of impact fees if council chooses to go that route. So to illustrate how other jurisdictions have structured these types of policies, staff pulled together some additional examples. Um, while waiver or deferral policies are not always tied specifically to affordable housing, those are the examples that we chose to include just based on the conversation today. So there are three different waiver structures included here. Uh, the city of Fremont exempts fifty percent of impact fees for affordable units. Uh, this is city and county of Sacramento, um, both provide full fee waivers, but the county puts a cap on the number of units that can take advantage of the fee waiver each year. So they limit it to two hundred total units in a year or five percent of the residential permits that are issued in the unincorporated part of the county. And then lastly, each of these jurisdictions has made decisions about which fees they wish to exempt or to reduce. So it's important to note that not all jurisdictions charge the same impact fees. And we'd only be able to provide these waivers or reductions for the fees we impose ourselves as a city. So now we're going to shift to take a look at how either of these policies might work in San Mateo. But first, I want to quickly review our existing inclusionary requirements for multifamily residential projects. So currently, any development with five to ten residential units in San Mateo pays a fractional affordable housing fee. And then projects with eleven or more units are required to set aside, uh, a certain number of units based on whether or not they are ownership units or rental units. So fifteen percent of the units for a moderate income households, if they're ownership properties. And then fifteen percent of proposed units for lower income households, if the, the property in question is rental units. So in these cases, the applicant includes the number of below market rate units when they submit their planning application. And the city then enters into a formal agreement prior to the building permit issuance. Um, one additional consideration, which I will talk more about in a couple of slides, is that the applicants can and sometimes do exceed our minimum requirements. And that was particularly true prior to the revision of our requirements early last year. You saw a couple of developers go above and beyond the inclusionary requirements, often to get additional density bonuses, for example, from the state. So in thinking about each of the potential policy options before you tonight, uh, it's important to consider how they might interact with those existing inclusionary requirements. So if council were to decide, decide on a fee waiver or reduction, it could be incorporated into the BMR agreement process that the city already has in place. So there's already sort of a structure in place, given that we are, um, requiring those units for, in particular, for multifamily projects with eleven units or more. And so it would it would fit into, uh, we could incorporate it into that existing process. With a fee deferral, um, the city would need to create that process for drafting and monitoring deferral agreements. Uh, it's, it's happened in a couple of cases, but we don't have a formalized program for a fee deferral process. Um, from an eligibility perspective, city council could make the waiver specific to affordable units, uh, and based on our new Nexus studies, a hundred percent waiver of impact fees yields a potential savings to the developer of about thirty eight to forty three thousand dollars per unit, uh, depending on the size of the unit. A fee deferral might apply a little more broadly. So in other words, it, it might not be just for the fee amounts charged to affordable units. And it's more difficult to come up with a savings estimate because it's dependent on a number of different factors, but it would be safe to say in most cases, developers would receive a smaller amount of savings under a deferral program than a waiver. And then finally, there are a couple of key differences when we look at the financial implications for the city. Fee waivers would require the city to find other revenue sources to pay for infrastructure costs or delay infrastructure projects until additional fair share or proportional fees are collected. With a fee deferral, the city still collects the full amount of the impact fees for a project. But that revenue is delayed until a project is a little bit further along in the development pipeline. So I mentioned on the previous slide that it's difficult to quantify how much a fee waiver might save a developer, but we set some parameters on this slide to show how it would work. So here we're assuming that there is an eighteen month timeline from the issuance of building permits to the certificate of occupancy. So for a two hundred and twenty five unit project, the fees calculated in the new Nexus studies would come to roughly nine point eight million dollars. If the developer is paying those fees with a loan, for example, of, with a four percent interest rate, they could potentially save about five hundred eighty eight thousand dollars in interest payments over the course of those eighteen months, if they're allowed to defer the, to the certificate of occupancy stage. So they could wait those eighteen months and pay, um, later on as opposed to financing it upfront and then paying the interest over time. Uh, and so again, you could see it's based on a number of factors, but this gives you an idea of the mechanism at least behind how those savings would work. And then on this slide, we capture the potential scale of savings with a waiver or a fee reduction. So here we're again assuming a two hundred and twenty five unit project. In this case, a hundred percent of the units are affordable. Uh, and so under the new impact fees, the project would be subject to a little over nine point three million dollars in impact fee charges. And so we included a couple of policy options in this table, uh, and they're not an exhaustive list, as we'll discuss on our next slide. So this project is two hundred and twenty five units, which means that it must provide thirty four affordable units under the city's inclusionary requirements. That's fifteen percent of their two hundred and twenty five units. However, the developer, because it's a hundred percent affordable, is opting to provide all two hundred and twenty five units at affordable lower levels, so a hundred and ninety one more than what the city would require them to be providing. So if, if council in this case, for example, set a policy to reduce fees to fifty percent for all units above the city's inclusionary requirement, the developer would save about four million dollars in fees. Uh, in other words, the city is only charging those one hundred and ninety one extra affordable units, half of their full impact fee value, um, as, as they might have what they might have charged a market rate unit. And then if that number is set at a full a hundred percent fee waiver, developer saves nearly eight million dollars. So two scenarios here to show you what this might look like and what the scale of savings would be in comparison to a deferral program. And then on this last slide, I'll show you a few additional ways you might consider structuring a policy like this. So it could go a number of different directions in structuring and also determining eligibility for a fee waiver program, if that's the direction council would like to go. So you might decide to apply a waiver program to affordable units and a hundred percent affordable projects. And so that would yield, as we saw on the previous slide, significant savings in the millions of dollars, depending on the type of projects. But it would apply only to a small number, given how infrequently we receive a hundred percent affordable proposals. Um, council could also decide to apply it only to projects that voluntarily exceed the city's inclusionary requirement. So that could yield savings, as I mentioned earlier, of about forty thousand dollars in fees for each additional unit provided. And as noted in this slide, uh, it's probably not enough on its own to incentivize the inclusion of affordable housing units. But it could be combined with the state density bonus or other incentives to make affordable units more attractive on the margins, uh, for market rate developers. And then lastly, council could also consider waiving or reducing fees on all affordable units. So because all projects with more than eleven units have to include affordable units, all large multifamily projects would receive some savings under this type of policy. Um, as a result, it probably wouldn't incentivize affordable housing in particular, but could provide a small financial incentive for multifamily housing in general. So that concludes tonight's staff presentation for this item. I'm going to put up the key guiding questions for council on the screen. Um, so first, would council like to pursue a fee waiver or reduction for affordable housing projects? If yes, what percentage of which fees would council like to reduce? And is council comfortable with applying that reduction to affordable units in excess of the city's inclusionary requirements? Or one of the other options perhaps presented on the previous slide? And if council does not wish to go the route of a, a waiver or reduction, would council instead wish to implement a deferral program for affordable projects? Um, and then lastly, does council have any additional direction or policies they'd like staff to evaluate? And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. It looks like we have a question from council member Pappen first.
Thank you so much, uh, for the clear presentation. I have a quick question. Is there a default rate at all on those deferrals? I've been at this a long time, litigating construction projects, and cash is usually not at the forefront at the end of a project. So I was just curious, has it ever been a problem collecting when there's a deferral?
I have seen examples in other jurisdictions that have noted that being a concern. I think ultimately we'd be entering into a written agreement upfront with the developer. Um, and you know, based on whether or not the developer actually completed the project would be then collecting the fees. And so I guess they, they could make a case in that, in that situation, if the developer does not ultimately complete the project, they also potentially don't have the same impacts to the city. So I, I see persona is unmuted there. I don't know if you had anything to add to that.
Well, I also say that
you could withhold the certificate of occupancy. Is that where you're at?
Exactly. Right. I mean, you, you could have a, uh, recorded deferral agreement, and if property changes hands, it'll run with the land, so it'll be binding on a future owner. And then, um, it, uh, a certificate of occupancy, uh, could be withheld so that the property owner, the developer, would be forced to pay the fees, uh, before the project could be occupied. So, um, you know, there, there are ways to ensure payment. I think what gets a little complex is if a project just stops, comes to a standstill. Um, if a developer goes bankrupt, then you know, that can present another set of, of complications as well.
Any other questions? Council member Pappen? Uh, any other questions from council? Uh, council member Lee?
I, I had a question. I was wondering, um, how many a hundred percent affordable projects do we have in, um, in the city, or would we anticipate in, you know, a five-year span, let's say, based on, you know, based on our current track record?
I punt that question to Sandy Council, who is our housing manager, I believe, is on the call.
Okay, there we go. Sorry. Um, uh, so over a five-year period, I mean, it, we usually have an affordable, looking at our past several years, we bring probably an affordable, a hundred percent affordable housing project to council, maybe three over a five-year period. Um, they do take a while to put together, and finding land is, is a challenge, but I would say one a year would be extremely aggressive based on our past experience.
Hmm.
Three over five is probably about right.
I think that's helpful to kind of put it in perspective. And, um, what was the sense from, from developer, nonprofit affordable housing developers and, you know, and also our private developers in terms of how much of an incentive this would actually move a needle to, to, you know, get them to build above the inclusionary requirements? For example.
So when we put together our, when we revised our BMR, um, requirements earlier last year, um, it really showed that the economics of building affordable housing, even in the absence of fees, is pretty challenging. Um, so like I said in the presentation, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's going to, to really incentivize it on its own. Um, and state density bonus law is changing so frequently, it's possible that in conjunction with that, if we have this plan in place, it, it could incentivize some additional production. Um, but I think at the end of the day, any sort of little bit that you can provide to affordable housing projects is, is going to help. I just don't know that we can answer definitively how much is going to push people to add more, more units.
Hmm. And so just, and just so I understand, like exactly, you know, what, what the cost savings could be in the different scenarios, we're talking about like, you know, around, you know, five hundred thousand for a deferral, um, versus four million for a fifty percent waiver and versus eight million for a hundred percent waiver?
Yeah, and that really depends on the size of the project too. So in that case, we're not, we're probably not getting a lot of two hundred and twenty five unit, a hundred percent affordable projects. And so um, you're thinking like, for any, for any, um, if it's fifty percent, you're thinking that it's about twenty thousand dollars per unit that the developer is saving. If you set it at fifty percent, if it's at a hundred percent, you're saving about forty thousand dollars per unit. And so then it's based on really the number of units that the, are included in the proposal.
Hmm. And so having, um, you know, so like the, the, there's a big difference between the numbers, right? And like for a deferral versus a, um, you know, a waiver. Does it, you know, from a, from the builder's perspective, does having greater flexibility upfront, like does, does, is that, how much weight should we give that? In terms of making a project feasible? And does like that, does that difference between, you know, half a million versus, you know, several million, is that, is that a good trade-off?
So I'll say in conversations, uh, with affordable housing developers that, you know, e- even the waiver option or the deferral option is something that was attractive. Um, and so I think in terms of where the tipping point is and whether it's, you get enough bang for the buck by foregoing the additional money by waiving the fees. Again, I think it depends on the, the size of the project and sort of the other market factors at play.
So, so is the message just like, you know, anything we can do to, to move the needle, um, or, you know, nibble around the edges to make projects pencil better is welcome and appreciated?
I think in general, that's been the sense of, of our conversations. Um, and I know some other staff on the call have had some more frequent conversations with affordable housing developers. I don't know if you have anything to add, but I think in general, it's come down to, you know, that it's difficult to put together the financing for these projects. So any amount that the city can, can contribute towards making them, um, making them happen is, is appreciated.
Okay. So, so I kind of like, it's, I kind of hear two different things. One is like, it's appreciated, but it won't necessarily compel or incentivize um, developers who haven't already been convinced that they want to do this.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's just difficult to say with any certainty whether that's the case. Um, especially, I mean, we have seen some developers being willing to go above and beyond to get additional density bonuses, and perhaps this in combination with that. Um, for example, if you go up to a seventeen percent affordable, you get some additional concessions. So would it push them to add the two percent additional affordable units? Um, I don't know. I think it, it depends on the specifics of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm. Deputy Mayor Bernia.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Um, first is, on, in the report that we read earlier today or other day, uh, uh, under table three regarding impact in lieu fees scenarios, the one you showed us earlier, where it showed on the two hundred and twenty five unit project, uh, savings of four million or eight million, depending on the level of reduction. Um, in the second paragraph under that, it says that if we do this, we're going to need to find, uh, another source of funding. Right? Um, so I'm wondering if we could talk a little bit about where we think we might look for those other sources. But also, the last sentence there says, the city cannot use fees paid by market rate developers to fund, to make up for any shortfall in our affordable housing project. Why is that?
So I, the, in that case, I think the the report could have more articulately stated that, uh, we can't charge market rate developers more than their fair share contribution to, to fill in any revenue gaps that might be in place as a result of a fee waiver for affordable projects. So we have a maximum amount that we can charge of market rate development based on what's in the Nexus study. We couldn't then subsequently exceed that maximum amount in order to backfill any losses from revenue that might occur, um, based on, on a waiver for affordable units.
So, so let me ask, in, in my experience, the Nexus study usually provides a range of acceptable fees? Is that true?
It provides a, a maximum amount, and then it will, in some cases, will provide, uh, proposed amounts. It could provide, in our case, we also looked at what other jurisdictions are charging in San Mateo County and across the state. But it, it provides more, um, a maximum dollar figure, and then council is able to set the fees at a level up to and including that, that maximum amount per land use type.
Okay, I guess which also has the added benefit of making us competitive with other cities that can attract the developers. Okay, um, uh, I have another question then. Um, I, I'm a member of the HART board, the Housing Indemnity Regional Trust. We're taking a very close look at and probably going to be pursuing, uh, work on what we call affordable housing preservation. Uh, there's a joke in the industry, do you know how you build affordable housing? You, or you build an apartment building and wait forty or fifty years. So there are a lot of these apartment buildings around that present opportunities if there were to be some reinvestment. And, uh, we're seeing that there are models all the way around the Bay Area and in other areas where this can be done. Is the city considering possibly being able to work with HART to help with preservation of what's already existing as fairly affordable housing, but it just needs some improvements? Probably a question for Sandy.
Well, that's certainly something we can consider. And when we're working on our housing element here over the next few months, that would be the sort of policy that would be discussed at that point. I don't know, um, whether that has anything to do with these fee waivers, because these fees are on, um,
Yeah, it's slightly different subject, but thank you for saying that, Sandy. Appreciate it.
Okay, sure.
Um, okay, well, uh, those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Um, so here is how I'm thinking about it, and I just want to make sure, um, I'm understanding it. So um, one of the things I, I think we're, we're, as a council, we're trying to do, but I'll speak for myself, that I'm trying to do is looking at ways to incentivize more affordable housing at the margin. And I'm not necessarily looking to give away fees to developers for housing, affordable housing that they might have built anyway. Um, so is there any evidence that with the fee waiver, that that incentivizes affordable housing at the margin? Or is it or is it more like we're, we're just lowering the cost overall and hoping that it makes a difference somewhere?
So I mean, there is not a ton of, of evidence as far as, you know, being able to point directly from, uh, reducing fees at the margin to actually building marginal units. I will say, um, that I think the evidence that we have here in that some developers were willing to go above and beyond our own inclusionary requirements to get some additional density bonus concessions from the state, I think indicates that if we can, uh, provide some additional marginal financial benefits um, for the additional unit or two or ten, um, that it's possible that it could work in conjunction with those types of of projects and that existing incentives to move people in that direction.
And, and that last part would apply to both the waiver and the deferral, but obviously the waiver a little bit more so because it's more.
It, it could. I mean, that's, that would be up to council in terms of how you want to, to structure it.
Okay. All right. I'm not seeing, oh, council member Lee.
Uh, can I just ask, just for my own recollection, wasn't, didn't we waive the fees for Kikus Crossing and wasn't that a linchpin decision for the financing? Or am I, am I, am I misremembering this?
I can clarify that. We waived our own I can clarify that. We waived our own building and planning fees for that project. But what we're talking about here is the development impact fees, the sewer fee and transportation. So for Kiku Crossing, what we did negotiate with them, though, was this fee deferral. And that's when. That's where Brian got a lot of his data to show you examples. So we did do the fee deferral for them and for um. A hundred percent affordable project, um, any cost savings that. The developer can get is is totally appreciated and helps helps the financing package. Because those are really complex deals and take a lot of subsidy. So um, so that that was a different scenario. We waived the building, our own staff fees, but we did not. Waive the impact fees, but we did defer, which did present some savings to them. And I think I'm going to agree with Brian to several of your comments about, does it really? Does waiving the fees on the margin for like a an inclusionary project to incentivize the developer to build a few more? That's that's a lot less certain. Whether it by itself is enough of an incentive, but like Brian said, maybe that coupled with a another uh. Density bonus incentive could. Could incentivize that, but I don't think the fee by itself is is going to do that. On the hundred hundred percent affordable housing projects, any kind of fee assistance is. Is really helpful to make those projects pencil.
Great. Okay, so so seeing no more hands, I think it would be a good time to open up. Somebody's hand is raised. Councilmember Pappen. Oh, false alarm. Um, okay, we're gonna open up a public comment. Right now. And so if you're a member of the public and you'd like to uh speak on this topic, now would be the time to raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, I'm seeing no hands go up.
All right, I'm gonna close a public comment, bring it back to council for any further questions or comments. And it looks like we have the. The guidance requested from council uh on the slide. So if we if we don't have any more questions, we can, I guess, go one by one and talk about your preferences from this. Uh, Deputy Mayor Benia, I'd like to kick things off.
Thank you very much. Um. Um, our presenter, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Uh, it's Brian.
Brian, thank you.
Sure.
Um. With the uh first if so there. Um, we're talking about which fees. So let me state first. I I would prefer the fee waiver or reduction. Over the deferral. I just think it provides a better benefit. Uh, it provides benefit upfront and um. I think it can make a difference right away. Um, but in terms of what fees. I would like to reduce. I know there was a list someplace of the fees that we can look at. Can you put that up, please?
Yeah, so let me.
Maybe just maybe discuss the benefits a little bit of the or the pros and cons of each one.
So this is everything that we looked at in terms of the. The fee study. I will say that based on our meeting on the sixth or the in June. What we talked about is actually condensing the South Trunk area sewer improvement fee and the wastewater treatment plant phase to expansion into a sewer capacity charge. Uh, and so really what we're talking about is the transportation improvement fee, that sewer capacity charge, the park impact fee. And the childcare development fee. Um, and then there's also, so and for example, there's also an art in public places fee. That's an in lieu, so the developer could. Provide public art on site to meet that requirement. Um, but that could potentially be an additional option for something for council to look at as well.
Okay, well, I like the idea of the const uh the consolidation. Uh, with the uh wastewater treatment plant and the South Trunk sewer. Uh, um, fees there and um. And the transportation improvement fee. I feel like is another area we could look at. I would not want to impact childcare development fee. Or the park and landscape uh uh. Um, or the park in Lou fee. The art in public, um. Yes, I think that needs to be maintained. Tree replacement, I want to keep that too. So I think we're looking at basically the sewer and transportation improvement fees. Those are the ones I would recommend that we could give the um, the uh waiver on.
So I will, I will note that if you look at how much each fee. Would be on this type of project.
Yeah, well, the park is huge.
Yeah, most of where you would get some of these. Savings that I'm that I mentioned earlier is by potentially reducing or waiving the park impact fee.
Yeah, so I'm torn because I think statistics show that we could benefit from having more park per thousand people. Um.
Can I say?
I think that this would only happen on a small set number of projects where we're seeking. Uh, an advantage in terms of affordable housing. So. Uh, a fifty percent uh fee waiver on the park impact fee. Uh. Would probably on these few projects be something that we could make up for uh with some other ways. So. I think that's probably the best path forward on that.
Uh, I just have a clarifying question on that. So for all of these fees that we would waive. Would we, do we have the option of saying, oh, well, you know? We can let this one slide and not put the money into, say, our parks, or is it? For sure, we need to, for every one of these, we determined that that was the impact for this development, we need to pull the money from somewhere each time?
I'm not sure if I completely grasped the.
Oh, okay, let me let me say it again. So when when uh Deputy Mayor Benia was going through. Um, it was kind of like, well, that one's a little bit less important than this one or or that one. But I was my understanding that all of these would need to be paid. Um, it's just the and they were all, so they're equally important. They're all need to get paid. It's just a matter of. Which ones that we're waiving the fees for that we would need to. Back backfill that amount.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And we still need to figure out how and when to do that. So. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. As I mentioned on one of the the slides, um. Basically, the city would need to identify alternate funding sources and would either need to delay infrastructure improvements until that. Those funding sources are found or um. Or until we basically collected through fair share fees that are charged on other types of projects.
But what, but this whole thing is designed to kickstart more affordable housing, which is really what we're looking for. Is that correct, Brian?
Correct, yes.
I- is there a difference between um. Reducing the fees and backfilling the fees and just allocating more money for affordable housing? And. Gi- giving it to developers? Or is it essentially the same thing? It's just how we're accounting for it?
Um, I I may defer to another staff member on that question in terms of how we've done it for our hundred percent. Affordable projects before. I know that the city, for example. Um, the value of the land that we contributed for the Kiku Crossing project was about. Uh, thirteen million dollars, and then we put about seven and a half million dollars in affordable funds into the. Into that project. Um, and so in some cases, it might be um. Looking at at it might be a function of accounting.
Yeah, this is Sandy. Um, yeah, I think, uh, Eric, you're right. I mean, one way to assist the project would be just to give them an extra nine million dollars to cover the fees. Uh, versus waiving the nine million dollar fee. Um, I'd have to go back and consult with our. You know, our financing experts, with our developer partners, but um. There could be some overall savings to the project by having a reduced project cost. I know that in um, it, one thing they had mentioned to us is that um. The cost per unit is becoming more and more of a factor in competing for other like state funds and so forth. So if we had reduced the um. Fees and reduced the cost per unit, twenty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars, whatever Brian had had given us as an example. Um, that is becoming more and more in a factor, uh, especially for projects in the Bay Area, which have really high construction costs. So there is that sort of nuance of assistance that could help an affordable project.
And and the reason I ask that question is because what we're really deciding here is how much more do we want to subsidize affordable housing? And it seemed to me like, um, if we if we make it a blanket, um. A waiver, then anybody gets it. Whereas if it's a discretionary fund where we can kind of take a look at it like the Kiko crossings and say, hey, yeah, this has all the stuff we want. You know, let's that's 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 increase it maybe more over than what we would have reduced the the waiver. Um, or whatever we would have reduced the fees through the waiver. Um, it just gives us more levers to push. Um, uh, so. Uh, that's that's the only reason I asked that.
Let me ask something else on that. I know that we have a development impact fees that were also developed through a Nexus study, and. We're seeing office development, which is the big payday on those fees. Um, what are we doing with that money? And is it available to help us compensate? For any of these other fees when they weigh? Or is how is it being used? Is it part of this?
So in in the case of an office development, um. I mean, we are collecting whatever impact fees that type of development is is subject to. Um, so like we we just, in revising our fees earlier this year. One of the things we brought to council was the potential of starting to charge a park impact fee on commercial development, which is now something we've done previously, for example. Um, so to the extent that we are collecting. The the full amount of fees from commercial development based on what their fair share would be. Um, it does go, it's the same sort of funding stream. But it's not something that we could say, you know, we we will charge commercial developments more. Than what the Nexus study indicates is is the maximum amount in order to fill. The revenue that's lost by implementing a waiver for affordable housing.
So that wasn't really my question. Is that money uh part of this calculation that we're looking at now? The money we're collecting, it's twenty five bucks a square foot.
Uh, Brian, he's talking about the commercial linkage fee.
Oh.
For housing. So yes, we are collecting housing fees from commercial developers through a different impact fee. Uh, and those fees can be used to subsidize affordable housing projects in many ways and. And um, reducing fees is certainly one option for the city.
Yeah, because I know we're looking at several office proposals right now. I think. Some money uh has been coming in and some more will be coming in. But I think we should not uh uh count that out for the calculation for uh backfilling uh for waivers. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh better understand the point about, like, when we were talking about. Um, the right sizing our fees. It was determined that we have to backfill in like hard dollars. It sounds like that's changed, right? And now there's um, there's some scenario of, you know, the forecasting. Our fair share, right size, new fees to eventually make up for. Um, and kind of balance out whatever subsidies that we're offering for these unique one hundred percent affordable projects. That only come to us once every other year if we're lucky. Am I understanding this correctly?
I may look to our city attorney's office to to field that particular question.
Yeah, so on the on the backfilling question, um, if there is a waiver or fee reduction. Um, then it's not necessarily that the city must then instantly write a check for that amount to be placed in that fund funds. It just means that infrastructure projects, whether they're transportation related or parks related or otherwise. May take longer to actually get built. Uh, and also, you know, or I should say may require looking at other sources of funds. In order to uh construct those projects. So hopefully that's that clarifies.
It does. So you're saying that it may take longer. Um, but eventually we project that um that the subsidies. Will be able to be covered through the um, through the. Fair share. Impact fees over time.
Well, I I would characterize it this way, that. Uh, to housing development projects or affordable housing development projects, they they are subject to impact fees, right? And then those impact fees fund the different types of um infrastructure that's on the screen for you. Now, if those fees are then reduced, then maybe a transportation project that could have been constructed perhaps. In perhaps a year or two, may take another year or two in order to receive sufficient funding in order to be built.
Hmm, and is are you basing this um, this example on actual budget forecasting that we've done? Or are we just, you know, because I think I I think with. The, you know, the the concerns that we hear from the community about population growth and the strain that it puts on our infrastructure. There's, um, you know, the any anything that will delay. Our already very aged and strained infrastructure is, you know, is of grave concern. And so trying to understand. You know, what what is the true timeline, um, you know, it costs, let's say, community costs. That is that we can tolerate to then support affordable housing, I think is helpful for us in in making a decision like this.
So th- these are important policy questions, right? I mean, there's that trade off between promoting affordable housing and uh. Perhaps just in speaking in generalities, putting off some infrastructure improvements. Um, just. Since we're talking about a development impact fees. That's that's not so much of a legal question. It's more of a question of um what the council is willing to um.
Right, it would be a good question for Rich Lee, our finance director.
Good evening, uh, councilmembers. Happy to answer some questions. So. The first resource I would uh point out to the council is our recently adopted budget document. Um, towards the end of that document, there's the CIP section. And listed are all of the projects that we were not able to fund with this uh five year CIP. Uh, in addition, if you look at the funding source detail, there are specific um. Funds like the the traffic improvement fee that uh essentially is overcommitted. What that means is we have projects that are already planning on or are using that fee. As a funding source for the infrastructure project. If you add up all the costs of those um projects, we are overcommitted to the tune of, you know, six to seven million dollars. With the intent that over time, and we're thinking. Hopefully in the five or six year period that the fund will be able to recover enough fees to to be um not be overcommitted. So uh, that's certainly um. I think uh. Conducive to this conversation if there are. A few um affordable housing projects and if it's the council's direction to. Waive uh transportation improvement fees. Uh, that is going to further delay that recovery process of what is now five to six years could be extended a bit longer.
Good, Rich, could I ask you another question?
Of course.
What do you think is the outlook of the possibility of receiving some federal infrastructure funds to help with some of these projects?
That I have not received any information from our lobbyist. Drew, is there any information from a lobbyist on the infrastructure bill?
We haven't gotten an an update recently. We're we're still pursuing all avenues of of funding for our various projects. In including federal funds.
Okay, good, thanks. So I just got something I'd like to mention. Transit oriented development of affordable housing uh near transit um. Is a less, much less impactful form of construction. Uh, people aren't driving cars, they're riding the train, people are walking around to get what they need. Buildings more efficient, a toilet only uses point eight gallons per flush. Uh, there are lots of advantages to this kind of modern construction that causes less impacts. For instance, the low flow toilet, less sewer capacity. Right? So uh, we need to consider all those things too. Thanks.
Well, I guess I have a follow up question on that. When we when we looked at the impact fees, were we taking into account um all those new modern? Uh, improvements that Deputy Mayor Benia just mentioned? Like, were we assuming a new, a new unit would have a low, uh, like a low capacity flushing toilet that's not efficient?
It's the state law. It is efficient.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is I think that all those improvements that you were talking about were built in the impact fees already. But I could be wrong, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I can't speak to the specifics of the of the. Um, you know, appliances in the in the apartment, but it is based on a water flow calculation that's based on sort of the both the size of the. The pipe associated with that unit um and the average daily flow. And then it does vary based on the size of the. Of the number of bedrooms. So it does go down to that level of detail in terms of coming up with what the. The amount of fees associated with sewer capacity would be charged to that type of project.
Okay, um, that or Councilmember Pappen, that I see your hand briefly go up.
Well, yeah, I mean, I appreciate the discussion because it really is a balancing of fiscal responsibility for all of these other wonderful things that the city needs to do, along with our desire to help affordable housing in ways that we can. So it's been interesting, and I've kind of just been sitting here watching because I think we all grapple with these same things and how, how is it that we want to make one a priority or the other? And we see that one has to give in order to give priority to the other. So my feeling is, I, I agree with Deputy Mayor Benia, not particularly interested in the deferral program, number one. Number two, I believe I heard Sandy Council mention that if you can lower the cost of an affordable unit, it makes you more attractive for additional affordable housing money. Did I hear that right, Sandy? I know you, I did. Okay. All right. So that leads me to believe that we could have some impact by reducing some fee and then making the units a little bit, a little bit more affordable. That's about how much we're going to be able to move the needle. And I guess the question is, do you want to do that? In a, in a, for me, I'm looking at perhaps some fee reduction to units that are over the inclusionary amount. Because I think that that might move the needle for a developer to get some additional funds to add some additional affordable housing units. So I'm trying to look at this in the concept of how are we going to get the most bang for our buck with the least amount of pain to the city for what we all know are infrastructure projects that are not going to go away? And with additional housing, we're going to have additional imposition on infrastructure. While it might not be as much on our sewers, we will certainly hope to have families there that will want to use parks. So how, how can we do this? I'm looking at, you know, I'm going to throw a number out there. It's not 100% for me. It might be something less than 50%. But if it can move the needle for a developer to get some additional affordable housing funding, I'm interested in some sort of reduction to the fees, but not a lot. Because I really think our infrastructure will continue to be burdened and we will continue to need the the money that we need in order to build the infrastructure. So that's kind of where I'm leaning, but I'm sending that out there as a feeler to move the discussion along and see what other folks are thinking.
Okay, I'll, I'll chime in here. It looks like I'm in the minority, but I actually like the deferral program. And the reason I like it is because a developer gets the benefit and the city does not really have to pay directly for that benefit. There are some, there are some associated costs with it, but basically lenders are paying or it's saved on interest. So that just seems to me like an opportunity to, too good to pass up to help that, that in that capacity to lower the overall costs. You know, I, I, I like where Councilmember Papin is going above and beyond. I think we need to be very careful with this to make sure that if we are gonna be basically spending taxpayers' money, that it's going to be incentivizing additional affordable projects and not just be, not just being pocketed. I mean, I generally like the idea that if we want to subsidize these housing, we should do it directly and, and increase our fee, increase our set aside or do something like that where we have that discretion to see, you know, are, is it a project that we really like? Are they listening to community interests? So therefore it gives the council a lot more leverage. As opposed that if we just waive the fees, it's just kind of a blanket and it couldn't incentivize more or maybe not. But it's, but there it's kind of who knows. So that's kind of where, where I'm coming from on this. Anybody else want to chime in?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I'll chime in and just agree with what the mayor just said. Mayor Rodriguez mentioned that we want to keep the discretion to to add fees or excuse me, to add financing to a project at our discretion when we see that they're working with the community, when we see that it, it has the most impact, when it's going to add additional units or additional projects. I think based on that, I, I agree with all the comments of Mayor Rodriguez. And, and I, I'll, I'll say one other thing, which is a moment ago, Councilmember Deputy Mayor Benia was talking about how these units that are the most dense, that are closest to transit, have the least impact on the rest of the community. And I think that that's a, a very powerful statement and the reason that we want to make sure that we're adding as many units close to transit and, and lessening the burden on the rest of the neighborhoods that are far away from transit, that's adding cars to the road and those kinds of things. So for all of those reasons, I think that these are the important projects to be subsidized. Those are my comments.
Councilmember Lee, do you have some additional remarks?
Uh, yes. Do you mind going back to the slide where we can look at the exact fees? Okay. So, so I, I'm leaning more in the, in the direction that Councilmember Papin was stated about wanting to help, help make our projects more competitive for financing, which is, as we know, the biggest barrier to getting projects built. For me, I think the focus on the 100% affordable projects is, is where where I feel like we'll get the most bang for the buck. And, and I think that there is merit to treating those projects in a very particular way because they, they come to us so infrequently. They're so special. And, and such, such, you know, opportune, you know, maybe, you know, maybe you get lucky and it's sort of four years and you get to see two of those kinds of projects come, come across the dais. So that's, you know, that, that's kind of where I, I want us to levy our, you know, our, our influence is in those, you know, those big impactful 100% affordable projects. When I look at the, the specific fee types, I was, you know, I was kind of on a different, on a different frequency or channel than, than Deputy Mayor Bonilla. For me, the infrastructure costs are, you know, are so essential. And when I look at sort of the, some of the other fees or associated fees, like for example childcare, and you know, I'm a huge advocate for childcare, I, I think of it, you know, as sort of a community benefit trade-off. The community benefit that we're supporting and prioritizing this case is affordable housing. And in that case, I think, you know, something like childcare could give or park day impact fees could give, where I don't see a strong justification for, for reducing sewer impact fees or even transit improvement fees unless maybe they're within, you know, you know, a quarter mile to transit. And I don't know if there's flexibility to put conditions like that on fees, if that's even legal, but it's, you know, a thought. So that, that's kind of where I'm going. I'm interested in in, in potentially applying to, applying the waivers to those projects that exceed the inclusionary clause. I think that that, you know, that, that could also help developers you know, in combination with the density bonus. And so I, I would hope that we could explore both of those options. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, it looks like we're a little bit all over the place and we have 11 minutes to go. So do you want to, Deputy Mayor Benia, do you want to chime in again, given what everybody else has said? You're on mute.
Yeah, thanks. I have a clarifying question. On the projects that Diane and, and Councilmember Lee just spoke of, which would be projects that go beyond the 15% inclusionary required for the affordable, are those the same projects that would be seeking the increased density bonus as a result of going above and beyond with that number? Is that, is that possible?
Yeah, I think in some cases, so you, you could see a situation where we have a, a fee waiver for going above 15%. So they go up to 17% and then get additional density bonus concessions or, or yeah, additional density based upon that decision.
So let me ask you, Brian, what would they have to do to get an additional floor?
I think it depends on the, the type of the project and the density of the and the specifics of the site. I don't know offhand how much they would need to add to get an additional floor. But I know that there are some sort of trigger points, one of them being 17% low income, or they do get some additional concessions from, from the state and additional density allowances. So it's, it's possible that, you know, that's, that's a two percentage point increase over the 15%. So it's possible that we could be seeing additional units in that case.
Okay, so trying to, to move things along. So am I hearing, I didn't hear three, three councilmembers in favor of any sort of deferral program? Is that, is that correct? I thought I heard Councilmember Goltz in favor of it, and I was, but it looks like there's nobody else there. Okay. So now it looks like we do have consensus, at least three on, or a majority to, to have some sort of, of waiver. So now it's, it's trying to flush that out a little bit more on how we want that to, to look like or give direction to staff. I heard, I mean, I heard Councilmember Papin kind of idea. She didn't really throw out specifics in terms of what that number would be, but I guess, Councilmember Papin, could you talk a little bit about how you envision it for 100% affordable? You, you talked about over the.
I wasn't really going down the 100% affordable. Mine was really if somebody wanted to do more than inclusionary. Because usually in the 100% affordable, you know, we apply money to it and we have applied land to it.
Yep.
So for that, for those projects, I thought the city, you know, had done quite a bit to facilitate what you call it, affordable housing. So I wasn't focused on that, although I know others may have been.
Okay, so I, I personally agree with you as well. Do we have three members that want to pursue 100% affordable waiver? I, I heard two. I heard Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Benia, or Deputy Mayor Benia. So it looks like we don't have there. So now we're looking at, at the margin of just now looking at what what Councilmember Papin said. Do we have three that are interested in how that would, how that would look?
So I think we have to decide how much you would have to. This goes, I, I, this goes down the path of increasing how much we're asking developers to build as a percentage of the inclusionary housing, which, which is a slippery slope because it pushes backwards on the ability or the interest that developers then have in using our local trained and skilled building trades personnel. You end up seeing the other developers that come with people from, well, I've seen Colorado and New Mexico to build the projects. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I, I don't like the idea of pushing the inclusionary number larger. I want to get as many affordable units as we can. I think we need to try to find some other way to do that.
So it's looking now like we don't have a majority on any one of these directions.
Just to clarify on the previous point, Deputy Mayor Benia, when you say pushing the inclusionary requirement higher, do you mean requiring all developments to include more than 15%? Or were you speaking specifically about potentially waiving fees for those that do it voluntarily?
So, so I may have misspoke because you're right. We're talking about voluntary action that would be taken in exchange for a monetary relief that we provide for them. So actually, I'm still in favor of that. I'm sorry, I kind of got off there a little bit. I think the question we're looking at right now is then what percentage of subsidy in terms of a fee waiver that we're looking at? And Diane mentioned something less than 50%. So I'm wondering, Diane, is that like 40% or what is that?
I don't know. I just, you know, maybe it's a 35% fee reduction, something along those lines, to help move the needle to make it less per unit and make the developer, their unit costs more attractive to getting financing. That's where I see this as having a real, you know, impact on affordable housing.
So let me ask you, Brian, there, there've been conversations with developers, I mean, I, I think, I believe. What, what do you think is their threshold for what they would see as, you know, reasonable exchange?
I don't know if I could, I could really answer that with any certainty. I see our city manager has his hand up and unmuted himself. Drew, I don't know if you wanted to jump in there?
Yeah, I was actually going to suggest, given the, given the discussion tonight, it, it does seem like we've, we've narrowed this down that now is perhaps a good opportunity for us to go out and have some more focused conversations with developers so that we could get an idea and bring it back to council. What is a feasible number for them and determine if that's a feasible number for us in, in, in terms of generating that balance that we're looking to get. And so if there's, there's interest in doing that, we're certainly happy to go out and have that conversation and, and see what we can come back with.
I think that's a good next step. Thank you.
I agree. And, and I personally, if it's not too much trouble, would like, would like their take on the deferral fees as well. Is it, is it help at all? Or, or is it, is it just a night, nice to have?
Yeah, we, we can certainly check into that as well. And then I just want to clarify one other point. So I know that there was, there, there wasn't an interest in pursuing an out and out fee waiver for the 100% affordable projects, but it is my assumption that because the city does make contributions to these 100% affordable projects, that, that as a part of that process, we would look at all the tools we have and, and, and use the ones that make the most sense for that particular 100% affordable project and that will, and that, that's still the interest of council.
Yes.
That sounds right to me. All right, we covered a lot of ground there. I think we, I think that was a really good discussion. Thank you, everyone. If there's no further comments, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and we'll a couple of minutes for our regular, regular meeting. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, it's going to take me a couple of minutes to flip the meeting.
Okay.